Recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there any such person?
Amanda Burke Sentinelon Enterprise.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Counselor Squailia, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call.
President Kuschmerich.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally. Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green. Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squailia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Counselor Shalafou Zephyr.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Sue Shalafou Zephyr. I'm a city councilor-at-large in Leominster. I live at 900 West Street in Leominster. And I'm here to speak on item number 205-18, which is the City Council Resolution to go on the record in opposition to the Health Alliance reduction of services at the urgent care center at Burbank. So I'm here tonight and speaking in support of the City Council's resolution to go on the record. This is one more example, I believe, in an increasing list of service reductions and eliminations made by UMass Healthcare that they've done arbitrarily and without any or zero input really from the communities that they serve. This is one, obviously, in Leominster, they're talking about eliminating cardiac rehab unit as well as pediatric beds. So this is an ongoing, it's an ongoing concern, it's an ongoing problem. I haven't seen any data. One of the issues that I have is, I certainly understand the need for Health Alliance, so UMass Memorial Healthcare, to develop a sustainable business plan going forward, but haven't really seen any data to support these kinds of eliminations or reduction in services. So I haven't seen any financial data, any census data on the proposed acute care closing in Fitchburg. I haven't seen any impact statement on the displaced patients. And I know that the, in a press release have said, well, they can go to the CareWell urgent care center on John Fitch Highway, but again, that requires a credit card, it's in a different part of the city, transportation could be an issue. So again, haven't really seen any statement that addresses the impact. The rationale for shifting patients from Burbank to CareWell urgent care, again, I haven't seen any rationale for that. And what I hope to see in the future is more outreach by Health Alliance Hospital, by UMass Memorial Healthcare, to work with the communities in developing these kinds of proposals. Again, I understand that they're trying to build a sustainable long-term model. I'm sure everybody in this room wants to see our community hospitals maintained and sustained and able to provide services, but we just need to be more of a partner in determining what those services are going to look like and what the future of community healthcare providers is going to be in North Central Massachusetts. So partnership and transparency, I keep coming back to those two words, and I would like to just throw those out to the public because I think we need to see more of that in working with our healthcare providers. I do want to thank the mayor for his invitation to the Leominster City Council to the meeting on Friday the 13th, I think. I think that that will be very productive, and I will be there and look forward to having that conversation with those representatives. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Hurley?
Thank you. Thank you, councilors, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Hurley. I live at 859 Ring Street. And tonight, I'd like to speak to petition number 209-18, a petition to repair Metaget's Dam, refill the pond, and most importantly, to restore wildlife. I have a letter I'd like to read. On April 13th, 2018, Metaget's Pond was drained. The decision to drain this pond was made after it failed a dam safety test. It had been reported that the leakage in the gatehouse had worsened since the last semi-annual inspection. Metaget's Pond and Morin's Playground serve as a passive park area for the city of Fitchburg. The pond serves as a home for a wide variety of wildlife. Among these are several types of fish, beavers, muskrats, ducks, blue heron, et cetera. The lower area of Morin Field has a trail system that is complemented by the trout-filled Phillips brook that fills the pond. The trail, running through the middle of the expansive area, is overgrown but could easily be opened up to make a loop. There is a beautiful stone bridge in the middle of this trail that you can easily ride a bike over. Before we make this area a brook without a pond, let's reflect on what that will mean. We have breached the dams at Simmer Park and Greens Pond recently. No more heron or ducks will be seen there. This passive park could complement the city's bike trails. Let's have a destination from Main Street to commute with nature and maybe enjoy a tranquil picnic lunch. A lot of dollar figures are being mentioned on how much to spend to fix this problem. I would like to ask a few questions. Is it possible to look at the last three semi-annual dam reports to see how much damage there is? What would the cost be to fix it to the point where it would be able to be partially filled? Have we exhausted all other options, or are we just saying it's a done deal? Sorry, wildlife. The citizens of Fitchburg deserve a passive park with a pond to show our children what this important ecosystem is. Have you ever collected frog eggs and watched them hatch? The ripple effects of totally eliminating this pond can never be reversed. Thank you very much. And I have three sheets of a petition, that Counselor Caddy, that I collected and filled up, and I also have several photos of the area that I mentioned from lower Morin's Playground.
Mr. Hurley, if you would, we'd be happy to take both your letter and those signatures and submit them into public record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Is there anyone else? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Reed. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Mayor, my name's Kevin Reed, and I live at 288 Sanborn Street, and I'm here in reference to petition 209-18, and I had a lot to say that Michael has just said. I live right next door to the dam. I've been there 32 years, and people stop by and ask me, what's up? What's going on? And I says, well, I don't know. I'll try and find out. But like he says, we're missing a lot up there, like ice fishing derbies for the biggest and the smallest fish, and it's all different kinds of activities up there for the kids. And I have a lot of kids that stop by my house, and they were asking me, and I had presented a petition at City Hall, and I don't know if anybody's seen it or anything. I got a few signatures and talked to quite a few people, and they're very concerned about no pond because the wildlife has left, and I have pictures of eagles sitting in the trees at my house, and I miss the geese in the morning coming in a quarter or five. There's a lot of things that are gone, and right now, I'm worried about the hole in the dam because we're going to get some rain tonight and tomorrow, and the water's pointed right at me to flow. So I was, before, it was pointed downstream, so I'm kind of concerned about that. But yeah, there isn't much more I can say that Michael hasn't told you. I mean, everything's gone up there, all the wildlife is gone. The old ladies were concerned, they couldn't feed their ducks anymore. So that's about all I got to say. We'll have to, I hope you guys will take the money and fix the problem. I don't know if you've referenced the, let me see, there's a dam down in Swansea, Mass. It's by the Rhode Island border, looks just like our dam. Needed much more work, and the contractors got it in on time, below cost. So if that's something you people want to look at to get some estimates, I mean, I'd like to see some qualified people, you know what I mean, doing this, have an architect or a scientist or something onboard, not just coming up and ripping it apart with a chain, you know? So that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, if there are no objections, we'll hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening to take up a singular reappointment to the Fitchburg Disability Commission for a term to expire January 1st, 2021, for Mr. Basil Tolos, who is here with us in the evening. Thank you for being here. And the committee voted unanimously for zero in favor of the appointment.
Motion to approve the appointment. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the committee report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. Congratulations, sir, and thank you once again for your willingness to serve our city. Next on the agenda is the report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, they appear to be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the mayor, there are four this evening, all appointment letters, the first for Mr. Tyler C. Cody as a student police officer for the city of Fitchburg, second for poll workers for the period of September 1st, 2018, through August 31st, 2019, third for Ms. Mary Gianetti as a member of the Board of Park Commissioners for a term to expire July 1st, 2022, and fourth for Mr. Stephen Boudrothe as a member of the Water-Wastewater Commission for a term to expire June 1st, 2022. Those will all be sent to appointments. Next on the agenda is a Finance Committee meeting of June 26, 2018, which met, sorry, on June 26, 2018, took up the following matters. 185-18, loan order appropriating $4.5 million to pay costs of replacing water meters, electronic registers, radio cellular network, and data collection system and other ancillary equipment and borrow amount as outlined in the enclosed order that was adopted. 188-18, and councilors, that will require a roll call later this evening. 188-18, ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of funds from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Recycling IQ grant in the approximate amount of $40,000 for the purposes of said grant, which is to reduce contamination in the curbside residential recycling stream that was adopted. 189-18, ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Federal Forest Legacy Program grant in the approximate amount of $1,070,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is for the costs of purchasing a conservation restriction on a certain parcel of land in Princeton known as the Bamba property in the amount of $520,000, and for the cost of purchasing a water, a conservation restriction on a certain parcel of land in Westminster known as an Acrosses property in the amount of $300,000, and for the cost of purchasing a certain parcel of land in Westminster known as the Wright property in the amount of $250,000 that was also adopted. 190-18, order authorizing the city of Fitchburg to obtain a conservation restriction on a parcel of land in Princeton known as the Bamba property as outlined in the enclosed order that was adopted. 191-18, order authorizing the city of Fitchburg to obtain a conservation restriction on a parcel of land in Westminster known as an Acrosses property as outlined in the enclosed order that was adopted. And lastly, 192-18, order authorizing the city of Fitchburg to purchase a certain parcel of land in Westminster known as the Wright property as outlined in the enclosed order that too was adopted.
Motion to approve 188, and 192-18, holding out 185.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 188 up to and including 192-18 to approve, 188 up to and including 192-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous.
Motion to approve 185-18.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 185-18. This will be done by roll call. First reading, Madam Clerk.
President Kuschmerich.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally. Counselor Donnelly.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green. Counselor Caddy.
Yes.
Counselor Squailia.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Motion carries unanimous. Public Works Committee meeting of June 26, 2018. Counselor Caddy.
A motion to approve the DPW, holding out 38-18.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Public Works Committee report excluding 038-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries.
I'd like the motion to send 38-18 back to the DPW and also a letter to the city solicitor to give us a little better explanation of what could take place.
Second.
I have a motion and second to refer 038-18 back to the Public Works Committee and request an opinion and further details from the city solicitor. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion, I would prefer that the city solicitor be there at the meeting since I'm going to have the resident there with her paperwork and everything else, and there won't be no mix-up.
Chairman Caddy, would you be willing to work with the city solicitor's office?
That's up to the city solicitor.
I'll coordinate with Counselor Boishman and Counselor Caddy.
Thank you.
To ensure we have clarity.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, it is unanimous. Next on the agenda, public hearing, 180-18. Special permit, Francis Dower, for a special permit at 783 Water Street to install on one-third of the properties a Fun Stuff and Get It Done rental store, and on two-thirds of the property, a Fun Stuff Party Place indoor inflatable party playground. Now declare the hearing open, and I'd ask if the person representing the petition is here, if they could please join us at the center table. And gentlemen, if you could kindly introduce yourself by name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Francis Dower, Merrill Street, Fitchburg, Mass.
Ethan Delorye, 305 Millbury Ave., Millbury, Mass.
Thank you. So, sir, the floor is yours if you'd like to speak to, speak to the request in front of us now and what your plans would be.
Okay. The 783 Water Street is a former Lincoln Drug Store. Some of us might know it if you've been around here a long time as a prime value mark. There's a little restaurant on the right-hand side. The middle section has an adult daycare, and the left-hand side is vacant right now. It was a flea market there a little while ago, and we're looking to move our rental store that is located in Lunenburg right now to a portion of the front of the building and to use the rest of the front of the building and all of the back portion as a inflatable park.
And then, Counselor.
And I'm sorry, and I guess we'd like to amend the petition if we can. I think my lawyer this morning, or our lawyer this morning, registered our LLC, and so we'd like to amend the petition if we could, so it would be under the name of Fun Stuff Party Place and not my name, because it's actually going to be Fun Stuff Party Place for two-thirds of that, 11,000 square feet, and about one-third of that square, one-third of that 11,000 square feet can be the Fun Stuff Rentals Party Center, Party Store.
Madam Clerk, do you see any procedural issues with taking that amendment now before hearing public ends?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Motion to amend as requested.
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend as requested. Speaking on the motion, Mr. City Solicitor, you reviewed this, everything appears to be in order, and you're comfortable and in support of the amendment.
Yeah, we did confirm the formation of the LLC. It's a legal entity that's currently in existence, and it would be a sufficient person to be or entity to be committed.
Perfect, thank you. I have a motion and second to amend. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. Counselors with questions or comments, Counselor Caddy.
So you said 11,000 square feet?
Yes.
What do you have to do for the buildup? Is there a lot of work to do inside?
Well, the front of it right now, which is somewhat uninviting, according to, and that's what our architect said, and I said it's not somewhat, it is, we're going to, we're going to open up the front of it, so, and I think there might have been, I left some diagrams of the city clerk, we're going to plan on putting like almost in the center of our portion of the front, a glass entryway, and then towards the left-hand side where there's a set of metal doors, we're going to put some windows in and a set of doors that'll get us into the rental store. And so the rental store will take up just a small portion of that corner, and then there's a bunch of, there's existing walls in there right now, carrying walls, it looks like that building's been added on to several times. All that's going to stay, we're just going to, we're going to work around, our center is going, our party center is going to work around all the existing walls that are inside.
And you said it's 11,000 square feet.
According to the landlord, it's 11,300 square feet, yes.
And it's going to be open for retail for people?
There's going to be a rent, there's going to be a, the rental store will be open basically for our rental season, you know, and then in the wintertime, limited hours. The party center will be open, you know, depending on the time of year, it may only be open like Tuesday through Sunday. It's going to be private party and open play.
Awesome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Sir, with the Adults Day Health immediately next door on the other side of a wall, will you be doing any soundproofing that'll prevent noise from carrying it from the party center into that area?
There's a cement wall between the two stores right now, and we, that wall, right now, that wall is designed to have, and that wall is going to be, up about, about in that wall, it's going to be all inflatables. So chances of, I don't think there's going to be much noise coming through, because I think the inflatables will probably absorb most of the sound.
Great. Well, I think this is a wonderful addition to that neighborhood, so thank you. Counselor Zarella.
I am very pleased to see this coming to Fitchburg. I just wanted to confirm, have you reviewed the opinion from the fire department regarding sprinklers and so forth?
The, our landlord, our landlord is aware of the sprinkler problem, and it is written into our lease that he will take care of the sprinklers, and I guess some kind of a panel that needs to be upgraded or something, and I got to be honest with you, I don't know anything about fire protection, so I'm not going to even pretend I do, but our landlord knows about it, and it is written into our lease that he needs to take care of that so we can move forward.
Okay. And, all right, then, I am, I am pleased to see this coming in, and I will also look forward to seeing you guys in front of the zoning board.
Yes, I do, we have a zoning board meeting also on Tuesday because the area is light industrial, and so for the commercial recreation, we need city council approval, and for the rental store, because that's general services, we need zoning board, we need zoning board approval, and then I need a planning board approval also for parking.
And your fire, and your fire inspection.
Yes, so we have it all.
Counselor Squailia.
My question was regarding the fire alarm and the sprinkler head upgrades, so you answered that. Thank you.
Actually, our, the, our general contractor mentioned also today when we went in, he says those heads are going to need to be replaced also because they're old and antiquated. But I think the building's been around for 50 years, so.
Any further questions from counselors? Is there anyone here in the public wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. Matters before the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Donnelly.
Just so long as we all know that he's agreed, the owner has agreed to take care of the final problem, just subject to the fire department approval, building, building department is going to give their final occupancy permit.
Right, we need an occupancy permit before we even open anyway, so.
Yeah, that's the only subject, too.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Orders, finance, and counselors, there is a suspension requested for each of these matters, so we will take each in order. First before us, first before us tonight is 218, ordered that there be and hereby is transferred from within the sum of $8,500, seemed to be transferred from Fire Personal Services firefighters and credited to fire building maintenance household. Auditor Brooks.
Thank you. I am the one that's requesting that this order and the next two be taken up tonight under suspension of the rules. They're basically just year-end housekeeping, where we're trying to make sure that spending is staying within budget. No additional funds are required. It's basically transferring funds from one part of a department's budget to another. During the course of the year, we tend to have half a dozen different situations with it we follow and just keep an eye on, and then at year-end, if we in fact need to make transfers, we do. And so that's what these are.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules on 200, 201, and 202-18, and then vote on them separately.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 200 up to and including 202-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, matters now before the council.
Motion to approve 218.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 218. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries.
Motion to approve 201-18. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 201-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 202-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
203-18, ordered that the mayor is authorized for on behalf of the city of Fitchburg to execute and deliver any and all documents and take any and all acts necessary, convenient, and helpful to facilitate and execute the Community Host Benefit Agreement for non-medical marijuana cultivation and processing facility with Massachusetts Patient Foundation, Inc. Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you. I'm asking again that we suspend the rules on this order. You'll see over the course of the next couple of meetings, many of your marijuana adult use or non-medical marijuana companies are asking us to rush as quickly as we can as the CDC is beginning to hand out.
Motion to suspend the rules on 203-18.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 203-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, the matter is now before the council.
Mr. President, you'll see this contract is a fairly standardized agreement. It's extremely similar to the ones that you've seen before. Mass Patient Foundation already has a non-medical marijuana agreement with us. In addition to that agreement, they're promising us $75,000 to $200,000 as impact fees per year, which may be adjusted by a possible impact fee that they might incur to pay to the town of Westminster. What we did is, in paragraph five, we made some language that said that if they do have an impact fee, they will get a credit for what they pay up to, but not more than $30,000, which we felt was an equitable balancing of the impacts between the city of Fitchburg and the town of Westminster. In addition, the agreement falls in suit with the Community Relations Board. Mass Patient Foundation is a great corporate citizen in our city, and they are going to be contributing an additional $25,000 per year towards local charities and other city needs.
Motion to approve 203-18. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 203-18. Speaking on the motion.
I got one question for Vinnie.
Counselor Boishman.
And when I was reading the contract, it's the first time I ever see you put in there towards college education on your contract. Is that going to be something new? I thought I read in there.
I think, some of the, that may be related to something that these folks specifically wanted, but that could be a part of what we make that money available for. So I think with or without that language, that money could be made available for that.
And my second question, I also read that 85% of the people is going to be, you recommended Fitchburg people, we can get the desire amount.
I don't think there's a bright line. I think there's a goal or an optimistic focus to hire Fitchburg preference, excuse me. I don't thought, I didn't see it 80%, but let me look for that quickly.
That was 85, 15.
It does sound familiar.
Mr. Solicitor, correct me if I'm wrong, that we can't actually require an entity in the city to hire to meet it, it's simply a suggested quota. I believe our state Supreme Court struck that down.
Yeah, my, my, my language typically would be, and I don't think it's different in this contract, Counselor Boishman, is that we ask them to give our citizens a preference, but we try not to prevent them from hiring the best people that they'll need to operate their business.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I don't think we have a bright line in there, and I'd be happy to look at the contract with you after the hearing.
Page 811, number 11, it says, it's the 85% Fitchburg, 15% Westminster, I think that Counselor Boishman is referencing.
Okay. Page eight. So I just go back with the, with the following sentence after that, is that the residency will be a positive factor in hiring decisions at the facility, but does not prevent the company from hiring the most qualified candidates and complying with all employment. So that could be a bright line, that could be a soft goal, if you will, that was some assurance they gave us, but it's not going to, it wouldn't be anything that I would want you to, to bank on. Okay?
As long as we make it clear that we like to get preference to the local boards first, and women here in Fitchburg, versus them going out to a fishing event.
People working in the city will wind up hopefully spending their, at least some of their paycheck here in the city. The other, the other benefit is you have this large campus, Chem Design is being rehabbed and has already been rehabbed, and it continues to be rehabbed, so.
I have a motion and second to approve 20318. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Orders, other, 20418, ordered that the city clerk be authorized to notify the voters of the state primary to be held on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. Counselors, the clerk is looking for suspension on this matter.
Motion to suspend the rules on 20418.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 20418. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is before you.
Motion to approve 20418.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 20418. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. 20518, do you have the, the full language? Be it resolved that the city, the Fitchburg City Council is opposed to the proposed healthcare services consolidation by Health Alliance, namely the closure of the Burbank Campus Urgent Care Center, which services the City of Fitchburg as well as surrounding communities. As reason therefore, the city council finds that such closure of Burbank Campus Urgent Care Center would disproportionately impact the thousands of residents of the City of Fitchburg and have a negative impact on healthcare accessibility and delivery in the region. It is for this reason, and in the best interest of the City of Fitchburg, that we wish to record against the consolidation of healthcare services. Counselors, I won't belabor this, but I look at the proposed consolidation efforts, particularly the closure of Burbank Urgent Care, I look at it from two, two different standpoints. First, economic impact. We've seen a consistent closure of facilities in Fitchburg. I live on Blossom Street, that used to be, you know, Doctors Row back in the day, and it was lined with doctors from Main Street all the way to Mechanics Street, and we've seen steadily throughout the years, the population of our residents and our workers in the healthcare profession diminish, not only in Fitchburg, but throughout the region. And in part, that was due to the, the closure of, of the ER in the 90s, and then again of the psychiatric inpatient facility within the past decade. So we've seen a huge economic impact to the City of Fitchburg, but more importantly, we've seen the accessibility and delivery of healthcare diminish, not just for Fitchburg, it affects our surrounding communities just as much, whether it's in Lunenburg, Townsend, or Westminster. But we've seen a continued consolidation of services that's impacting healthcare across Massachusetts, in particular in North Central, and we're seeing it in the poorest neighborhoods. The people that need and rely on these services the most are being the ones who are, who are forced to go further and further distances and have to struggle in order to receive adequate and necessary healthcare. You know, we're a, we're a large city, we're a sizable city, and for us not to have a nonprofit urgent care facility in Fitchburg would be at times disastrous, particularly to our elderly and, and our poorer population throughout this city. You know, I realize every organization needs to have a financially sustainable model, but a review of their 990s, and the Worcester Telegram, it did an extensive review of their 990s, show a profitable track dating back throughout the past decade, in particular profits of, you know, $28 million in recent years, and, you know, not asking them to, to go bankrupt over, over facilities in Fitchburg, but what we're asking them is to weigh community impact, to work with us, to make sure that as they, as they need to be sustainable, that they're still providing the necessary healthcare delivery to our residents that they need and deserve. And for that, I've put this resolution forward. Speaking on the, speaking to the matter, Counselor Zarela.
I am very much by nature a free market guy. I don't like to have government telling organizations and businesses what to do. However, we give special consideration and special tax status and so forth to medical nonprofits in consideration of their service to the community. If they're going to do that, then they need to be working with the community to serve the community. And there just hasn't been enough community engagement and community feedback in this process. So I would, I would echo what Counselor Shalifouzefer said at the beginning, and that we need a more transparent process, and we need one that involves the community and the city. And as such, I am in favor of this resolution.
Counselor Fleming.
I just want to respond to something that Counselor Shalifouzefer had said earlier about CareWell being there for us. As it turns out, CareWell does not take infants. So if you have an infant, I believe below six months, they will not help your child, only because we had a personal experience with that. So we don't, we won't have the same, same type of facility with that. That's it.
Counselor Fleming, I'll expand on that and say, you know, it's also not a nonprofit entity, it's a, it's, it's a for-profit entity that has a relationship with the UMass system, but it requires payment upfront and a deposit of a credit card in order to receive care. So it, it requires a credit card as a stipulation for medical treatment, which disproportionately affects the poorest of folks, first-generation Americans, as well as the elderly, so the people who need it the most can't get access. Counselor Squallia.
I just want to say to start that I am in support of this resolution, and I do not want to see further reduction of services within Fitchburg, specifically the Urgent Care Center. And I also would like to echo Counselor Shalifouzefer's points of that, you know, we didn't get, there's not, there wasn't really good outreach to the community, the transparency is noted, and that the community should be a partner within the Organization of Health Alliance when determining these decisions. And having said that, they just recently had a legislative breakfast for inviting the counselors and other legislative officials within the area, and I just, I jotted down some notes from Deb Waymoth, the president and CEO of Health Alliance. They say that the hospital has lost approximately 7% value over the past year and have dropped 73 full-time employee equivalents over the past year. So closing this urgent care was an adjustment on how one runs a business. So when I asked regarding, you know, some residents had concerns that this was just one step into the full closure of everything in the Burbank campus, and it was noted that they had recently gotten a multimillion-dollar donation for the cancer center. And so they plan on enhancing the cancer center and expanding services to make it the rural cancer center for central Massachusetts, and expanding their physical therapy location with complete wraparound services. So just for that note, they did, Representative Higgins noted the concern about the credit card use at CareWell Urgent Care, and Ms. Waymoth noted that, that issue is something that they're trying to work out. And also, they gave us an information fact sheet, which I can provide to the council, with average daily volumes for urgent care Burbank, trying to justify the closure, I assume. From 2015, it was 38 average daily volume, down to 32, 28, and 26 in 2018. And it, regarding that as well, with urgent care versus CareWell, it was noted that there's a doctor on staff at the urgent care in Fitchburg at Burbank, but there is not a doctor, a medical doctor, on staff at CareWell, whereas there would just be a registered nurse or some sort of other nursing level. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
You know, I was glad you put that in, because like I told one of the doctors, I was sitting across the table, I says, I don't understand, in the front page of the paper, they were jumping with joy, they had the best year ever, not, not too long ago. And all of a sudden, you know, they're losing money, I don't understand that. And I really honestly believe that with this big $40 million project they're doing up there, and with the takeover of Clinton Hospital, maybe they bit too much out of their pocket, they figure it's cheaper to close the poor section over here, us, and worry about over that way. That's my, sorry, Mayor, but I'm just going to the facts. And that, you know, I just feel that way, that I don't, I don't understand the logic when they're telling me to satno. We make record profits, and now we're closing. That's what I don't understand, and I have a hard time about it. Thank you.
Matters before the council.
Motion to approve 205.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 20518. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. 20618, an ordinance amending Chapter 44, Section 10 of the Code of the City of Fitchburg under positions paid yearly city solicitor and assistant city solicitor, first reading.
Motion to send 20618 to its first reading.
Second.
Motion and second to send 20618 to its first reading. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Petitions?
Motion to send 20718 and 2, up to 20918 to its prospective committees, Public Works.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 207 up to and including 20918 to Public Works Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. And then, counselors, matter to be taken from the Finance Committee for vote, 18718, ordered that the City of Fitchburg approves the expenditure of funds from Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs grant in the amount of $375,000 to start the process of removing or repairing McTaggart's Dam. Commissioner Laxo, good evening.
Thank you. Yeah, as Mr. Hurley mentioned earlier, on April 13th, we had a routine inspection done of McTaggart's Dam by Western and Sampson engineers, and as a result of that inspection, you know, they found increased seepage under the dam, and they downgraded its condition from poor, which it had been for, you know, about 20 years at least, to unsafe. And when they declare a dam unsafe, it triggers all kinds of actions, and, you know, that very afternoon, we were ordered by the Office of Dam Safety to empty the pond, just for safety reasons. You know, seepage can be a very serious problem with a dam, it can lead to a dammed area because material keeps washing under the dam and as more washes under the dam, you know, more keeps coming, and pretty soon, the whole structure can fail. So since then, you know, except for a brief time right after we had emptied it, there was a large storm and snow melt where the pond filled right back up again, but since then, it's been empty since, towards the end of April. You know, it's, it's reverted back to being Phillips Brook. So it turns out that back when Mayor Deanna Tally was state representative, he had asked me for ideas for an environmental bond bill that he was co-sponsoring, and, you know, one of the, one of the items that I suggested funding was McTaggart's Dam, $375,000. At that time, we're just looking to repair it, but when this issue came up, you know, several years later, the, the state changed it from a, the $375,000 for being repaired to being repaired or remove the dam. So, you know, I recognize there are two different ways of looking at this, you know, there are plenty of people, as we heard earlier, who, you know, want to save the pond, save the dam, and there are certainly good reasons for doing so, and on the other hand, there are other people who look at it for ecological reasons or financial reasons and say we'd be better off removing the dam. So what we'd like to do with the first part of the $375,000 is hire an engineering firm to look at the pluses and minuses of removing versus repairing the dam, get all the facts so we can see the, the costs, liabilities, recreational uses, ecological benefits, one way or the other, so that we can make an informed decision. The way the state is looking at it, they would like us to use this grant to get us to the point of, you know, through engineering, and then we'd be able to go ahead for another grant in a year from now for either removing or repairing the dam, you know, for the construction costs. So we have the request for proposal almost done, you know, once we get this order, you know, the grant approved, we'll issue the RFP and get some proposals, and hopefully by the end of the month, we'll get that ordered so we can get this started, and then we'll have to decide on, you know, what the process will be once we get the facts in on how the decision is made on repairing versus removing the dam.
So counselors, just keep in mind, as Commissioner Laxo mentioned, you know, the first part of this will really be to move forward with giving options to this body to then, at some point, appropriate and set a course of action. So I prefer not to get into the which course of action we support at this time, so much as the merits of appropriating this fund, these funds. Counselor Zarela.
That's pretty much exactly what I was going to say. This particular matter before us is only on whether to, to accept and expend the grant funding in order to do either or. We're not actually deciding what course of action we take tonight. So we can hopefully move this through.
Counselor Caddy.
I plan on having our next DPW meeting at Morin's Playground, and together with Mike Hurley, we will give a tour and a history of the entire area, make sure that all the counselors are invited. With that, motion to approve 18718.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 18718. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Counselors, before we, we do so, just want to thank, I think, is that along the same, I will, I will spare the people that you're going to thank. I, I just want to thank the, the number of city employees and volunteers throughout the city that played such a crucial role, and, you know, there's always some, there's always so many that, that go under the radar and unseen. I'll specifically call out the Department of Public Works in particular, who just did an amazing job cleaning up after each of these events. If you saw, you know, what it looked like immediately following the events, each of these events, versus what it looked like just two hours later, it's an amazing feat, and restored not only back to the state it was in, but, but better than before the event. So, you know, just thanking everyone who participated in Civic Days, Brewers Fest, Long's Joe, Block Party Parade, and then who will participate in the, the events that still come over the next week or two. With that said, Mayor Deanna Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also thank all the people that helped, that contributed to the continuation. We've got the amazing duck race on Sunday, and then we've got the wall that heals next week. This doesn't happen in a vacuum, particularly what, what just transpired over the, over the past few days. The Block Party was probably the largest crowd we've ever had, probably exceeded 20,000 people. I want to thank A.J. Terigne, my chief of staff, I mean, he works, he starts working on it now, the day after it completes, not to mention Ray and Ms. Burnett, and that what they did, and they do every year, is just, it's Diane, I'm sorry, is just extraordinary, and we really thank them. But also, the police department, the fire department, everybody, it's all hands on deck to make this happen, and we couldn't be, be happier. And there were a lot of other folks that helped to contribute to making these kinds of events successful. The parade yesterday was, again, people braved the heat and still came out and lined the streets. It was truly, truly gratifying. I appreciate that, and I hope everyone enjoyed their fourth. Thank you all.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourn.
Thank you, Counselors.